Afternoon. Call the meeting to order.
Mics are on.
It's on.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present?
It's working? Yeah, my mic's on.
That says it's on.
Is that? There we go. Calling the meeting to order for the September 12, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present?
Thank you. For current business, any questions on consent calendar from the dais? Seeing none, we have proclamation, two to give this afternoon. The first, if Ms. Smith and Ms. Lee would please stand at the podium, welcome. If you'd like, you can say a couple words, introduce yourselves, and I'll read the proclamation.
Yes, thank you. My name is Catherine Smith, and I am an advocate for Alzheimer's Orange County. On behalf of Alzheimer's Orange County, I would like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city of Newport Beach for acknowledging September as World Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Today, there are more than eighty-four thousand Orange County residents and forty-seven million people worldwide living with Alzheimer's disease or another form of dementia, and that number will triple by the year 2050. Since 1982, Alzheimer's Orange County has been the county's largest local nonprofit organization dedicated to providing free education, support, and advocacy to people and families living with memory loss. We are so grateful for your help in raising awareness about the devastating impact of Alzheimer's disease, and invite you to take the first step toward a dementia-free community by participating in Walk for Alls. The Walk for Alls is the county's largest community event to raise awareness and bring us one step closer to finding a cure. Each year, over ten thousand people participate in our Walk for Alls, uniting the entire community in the fight against dementia. Get ready, get registered by visiting our website, www.alzoc.org. If you or anyone you know is in need of our services, please reach out to our 24/7 helpline staffed with social work professionals by calling 844-HelpALZ, or once again, visiting our website. Again, thank you, Mayor and City Council, and the city of Newport Beach for joining Alzheimer's Orange County as we recognize September as World Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have somebody you want to present as well? Is that... Okay. So Harp, do you want to receive him, and then you... I'll read the proclamation while he does that. Whereas the nation, state of California, and city of Newport Beach observe World Alzheimer's Month during this month of September, whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that tragically robs individuals of their moments and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas more than eighty-four thousand residents in Orange County alone, and over five million Americans are currently living with Alzheimer's disease, whereas Alzheimer's disease is the third-leading cause of death in Orange County and sixth-leading cause in the nation, and whereas each year, family caregivers provide eleven hundred hours of care per individual with Alzheimer's and working family caregivers cost business, California businesses, one point four billion in lost productivity annually, and whereas the mission of the Alzheimer Association in Orange County is to provide hands-on care and support, information, referrals, education, and resources for families in Orange County and surrounding areas who experience memory loss, Alzheimer's, and other dementias while advancing critical research for a cure. Now therefore I, Kevin Muldoon, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, hereby proclaim September 2017 as World Alzheimer's Awareness Month in the city of Newport Beach. If you'd like, we can take a picture by the flag. Bernie's Volstead, welcome. Do you want to say a couple words before I read the proclamation?
Does this work?
I hope it does.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilpersons. This is an exciting year. It's the fiftieth anniversary of the Newport Beach Historical Society. So, a week from this Friday, we have a big extravaganza at the Balboa Historical Pavilion there on the peninsula in Diane's area. And we're going to have fifteen restaurants there. It's a taste of history, and we have restaurants that are going to be participating there, and some of them are the Alley, the Blue Beet, the Bungalow, Cannery, Crab Cooker, Quiet Woman, Worf, and Village Inn, and many others. We have fifteen. So, we want to invite everybody out. It's fifty dollars a person, and we're there to, obviously, preserve the history of Newport Beach. That's our goal, and we, of course, invited all you to be there, and the mayor will be there, thank you. And we just are excited about what's going on, and we're going to have a great program planned, and a lot of fun. And we have the McFadden's. I had them come up for the nineteen... the 2006 anniversary, a hundred years for the city, and the McFadden's, who they're kind of the Irvine company of eighteen-eighty-two and nineteen-hundreds, basically. They kind of had the lumberyard, the railroads, they had everything. It's kind of the early Irvine company. So, they're coming up from San Diego, and they're going to talk, and we're going to have other people talk about the history of Newport Beach, so I'd love to have you all come.
Thanks, Bernie. It's going to be a enjoyable night, and I'm looking forward to attending, and let me read this proclamation. Whereas the Newport Beach Historical Society, established in August of 1967, connects people, past, present, and future by collecting, inspiring, educating, preserving, and protecting the unique environment history of the city of Newport Beach, including Balboa, Coronado Mar, Newport Harbor, and its islands and offshore in the Back Bay, Newport Coast, and Newport Mesa. And whereas December 2014, an official 501(c)(3) was created to achieve the goal of establishing a repository of historical documents with all donations to be tax deductible, and whereas the Historical Society has a great respect for the past, dedicated also to recording the present, as reflects the past for future generations. And whereas the first priority is to preserve the living past of Newport Beach through the Oral History Project, designed to capture the real essence and spirit of Newport Beach. Whereas the second priority is to establish a repository of historical documents, photographs, films, and memorabilia with an advanced system to catalog and preserve these materials, and whereas a museum space has been donated and is located at the Balboa Peninsula Library, historical markers have been placed throughout the city, and informative dinner lectures provide a platform for descendants and interested parties to appreciate our rich heritage. And whereas our rich heritage springs from a variety of talented people and achievements, and the Historical Society invites the community to participate in preserving and promoting our wonderful city and its people. Now therefore I, Kevin Muldoon, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, hereby congratulate the Newport Beach Historical Society on its fiftieth-year anniversary.
One, two, three. One more.
Onto official business. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. As you know, I've often been very critical of the lack of public disclosure in the agenda announcements for the closed session, and while item C on tonight's agenda remains true to form and tells the public next to nothing about what you're going to be discussing, I wanted to publicly commend the city attorney on the very expansive description and explanation he has provided for closed session item two, which is apparently related to the possibility that there will be a claim against the city from public employees who believe that they have not been paid overtime at as higher rate as they think they deserve. About that, I would like to say that while I appreciate that there's a legal question you may want to discuss in private as to whether the city has been offering and the employees accepting cash in lieu of benefits extensively enough that that would count as regular pay, which would be the basis of the claim, it seems to me that there is underlying this a item of public interest that really does not need to be discussed in closed session, which is how much the city would be on the hook for financially if it turns out to be at the wrong end of this argument. I think that's a number the public should be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, city attorney Harp.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss agenda items four A through C, including meeting with labor negotiators Dave Kiff, Carol Jacobs, Barbara Salvini, Brian Walter, and Peter Brown regarding negotiations with the unions listed in item four A. City council will also meet with legal counsel regarding potential litigation with the parties set forth in item four B related to the court's decision in the case entitled Flores versus the city of San Gabriel. And finally, the city council will meet with legal counsel regarding the initiation of litigation in regards to one matter.
Thank you. We're recessed till a seven o'clock regular meeting. Call the meeting to order for the September 12, 2017 regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present?
Thank you, Mr. Harp, for the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Dixon. Please remain standing and bow your heads. I will lead us in invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here this evening to do good work and to work on behalf of the people of Newport Beach, and that we may listen to their thoughts and concerns, and use our input and our judgment. And Lord, we pray especially for the victims of Hurricane Harvey and Irma, and that you keep our nation safe. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. Now is council announcements. These are non-discussion items, and new items that council members would like to introduce for future agendas. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it's been about a month, and we've collectively, as a council, done quite a few things, so I'll highlight just a few for my time. I promoted the Oasis Talent Show last time, and it happened. It was phenomenal. I encourage everyone to go next year. It is one of the best things that we do inside the city. We also had the movie in the park over in Coronado Mar, where we had Moana, and we probably had about four hundred people there, a ton of young families, phenomenal. I was able to attend the ACCOC Public Safety Forum. We had, I believe, three chiefs, three police chiefs in the area, the undersheriff for the county of Orange, as well as a county supervisor speaking about regional and specifically local safety issues. So, I say thank you to the ACCOC for putting that on. The Newport Harbor High School football field grand opening took place on Friday, and then this Friday, I think it's already sold out, but we've got the Battle of the Bay at Newport Harbor High School between Coronado Mar and Newport Harbor, so it should be a good one. And then Sunday morning, I was able to attend and kick off the Tunnel to Towers 5K. Our fire department showed up in phenomenal force, and I will just give a quick shout out to our fire chief, Chip Duncan, who showed up in full turnout with an air mask along with it and did the full 5K, so kudos to you, chief. One thing coming up, we've got the Newport Coast Community Center ten-year anniversary celebration this Saturday from 11:30 to 2:00 p.m. Can't believe it's been ten years already, but there you go. And then, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to mention the Newport Mesa Unified School District now?
Would you please? I believe there's a slide for it as well.
Okay. So, as they're pulling up the slide, I'll mention the Newport Mesa Unified School District, trustee area boundary changes. Pay special attention, especially if you have children in the area. Newport Mesa Unified School District asked us to share some information with you. The Board of Education will conduct three public hearings listed on the slide above to receive public comments related to proposed changes to its trustee area boundaries. Trustee areas are specific boundaries within the school district that each Board of Education member represents. Trustee boundaries are separate from school attendance boundaries. These hearings do not involve any changes to the trustee area boundaries. Will not impact a student's home school. Please visit the Newport Mesa Unified School District website for more information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter.
Mrs. Dixon. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few announcements. Do I have a slide to be pulled up? End of summer and end of Labor Day brought the end of our very successful summer trolley season, and there will be a report by staff to the public in the next few weeks, but I just want to highlight and spread some thank yous around. This chart shows the weekly weekend trolley traffic, or passenger traffic, if you will, and then it ended on Labor Day. Our goal was, our passenger target goal and commitment to OCTA, and for in exchange for receipt of OCTA funds, was eleven thousand passengers. The actual number was twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty. So, clearly, the... our visitors and our residents saw a fun, functional, convenient transportation alternative system on the peninsula, which contributed to increased visitor movement and transit around the peninsula and Balboa Island. And anecdotal evidence from business owners, residents, and visitors is that it was a huge success. So, thank you, staff, our community development department, Public Works, and Public Information for spreading the word. And again, there'll be more reports on this later when we assess what worked, what didn't work, and how to improve, if possible, going forward. Mr. O'Neill, did you mention the Marina Park Tijuana Dogs last Sunday? Staff did a nose count, about fifteen hundred people attended a Marina Park Wonderful Concert from four to six p.m. last Sunday. So much fun on a beautiful evening. It was families and kids. It was just great. So, about fifteen hundred people. We've had quite a summer with concerts on the green here and then around town. It's clearly a successful endeavor put on by our Recreation and Senior Services Department. Last Saturday was our Green on the Green, our eco, our ecology-environmental conference, or quite a lot of people here, Seminar on the Green. There were workshops and with our loyal and highly dedicated community environmental response, or emergency response team, our CERT people that represent all parts of our city, and they were here demonstrating. It was just a great day for all. I have an announcement from Mr. Heatherton, our library. New storytime and concierge service at Marina Park, speaking about Marina Park. Marina Park Concierge Service will now commence today, yesterday. Customers can place holds on library materials that come in from anywhere in the library system and pick them up at Marina Park, so saving time driving to the central library. And then there is also weekly storytime for children that has resumed. In our study session earlier this evening, we recognize Alzheimer's Month, and in fulfillment of that also, aligned with that, in parallel, Memories in Making Art exhibit at the library. The Newport Beach City Arts Commission presents an exhibit of artwork from the Memories in the Making Program of Alzheimer's Orange County. Over twenty pieces created by program participants with Alzheimer's and mild dementia will be on display at the central library. And it's... Memories in the Making was created to provide a meaningful activity for persons with dementia while focusing on creative expression as a form of communication. And it's something that gives back to patients, families, and the community that no other program has been able to duplicate, so look forward to people participating in that. On a more serious note, in terms of city finances, I sit on ACCOC, which stands for the Associated California Cities of Orange County. I am the local government finance chair, and in that role, I participated in a group of Huntington Beach, Laguna, Irvine, and Fullerton elected officials to go up to Sacramento. This was in August, August 25th, Friday, August 25th, and met with the Investment Committee of Calpers to learn more about how the public employee pension funds are invested. It was really an eye-opening experience, and what really... and we'll be talking more about this in our Finance Committee this week. I'll get to that in a moment. But the stakeholders, just to emphasize, in the corpus of the fund, the funds that are held and invested by Calpers, the stakeholders, not only the cities, we are called the employers, but the employees, the public employees themselves. We want... our mission is to protect those pensions, and there's just a lot of issue... many issues that can be addressed to improve and ensure the protection of those pensions as well as to perhaps reduce the steadily and relentless growth of the employer costs associated with it. So, we're all working together, the electeds, as well as some of the employee groups, not necessarily yet in Newport Beach. We hope to get there. We're working on strategic initiatives to address the rapidly growing catastrophe, as ACCOC would call it, of the unfunded pension liabilities faced today by many of our communities. The Calpers investment returns, or lack thereof frankly, have a direct impact on how cities, including Newport Beach, pay to keep the fund balanced, so it's really an important and timely issue. I'm glad we've all stepped up at other elected cities and other electeds, so we are putting together a really solid program as we go forward. But there'll be more to report on this as I report at our Finance Committee meeting at 3:00 p.m. on Thursday, September 14th. And one other... two other announcements. September 18th, I have a town hall at 6:30 p.m. at Marina Park, and one of the topics will be the Peninsula Crosswalk Study, and I know this is of serious interest to all peninsula residents, safety in our crosswalks. And speaking of safety, one final reminder is to all of you who are listening, stand-up paddleboarders, be aware that Coast Guard regulations and California harbors and navigation codes require life vests and whistles with you at all times. Harbor Patrol, Sheriff's Teams are enforcing these regulations with warnings and tickets, so let it be known that we have warned you. I know people who have gotten tickets for not having a life preserver onboard. The rental companies are doing this really well. It's the residents or permanent stand-up paddleboarders who enjoy our harbor on a regular basis who may not be aware that they too need life preservers and a whistle. So, that is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Avery?
Just briefly, I think it's like a long time ago, at least a month, after... the day after a council meeting, I attended the Police Youth Academy graduation, and that was really a great event, so well done by the officers that were there, and but more importantly, the students that were there, it was just... it was really something, and the speeches that were made at the end of that were so well done, so I was just... I was really impressed with it, and what a great program we have that our police department puts on. And the only other announcement I have is I've been involved in... with the Newport Harbor High School Mentor Program for five years, and tonight here we have my latest mentee, Jose Ortiz, sitting over here, and he's a sixteen-year-old junior, soon to be seventeen, at Newport Harbor High School with several advanced placement classes, and he's interested in city government, so my last mentees have shown up being interested in a career in boating. But Jose is on a whole different track and has been... he's had this agenda for about a week now and has studied it thoroughly, and he's looking forward to seeing how it all plays out tonight. So, I'm just really happy to have him as my mentee this year and be able to sort of share this experience with him, and obviously, learn from him as well. And I can tell you my... real quickly, my couple of brief conversations with him are not so brief. He's just an impressive person, really impressive, so thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Welcome, Jose. Mayor Pertham Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report on our trial transient mooring field, the top of the harbor, has turned out to be quite a success this summer. It's our third summer we've been doing it, and it offers much less pressure on our existing mooring field during the weekend, so it... it was an idea that came a long time ago from the Harbor Commission, probably a decade ago, and finally, it's proven to be something of value, and hopefully, the Harbor Commission can vet through that and maybe make it permanent. And also, I wanted to say hats off to the new harbor master, Dennis Durgan, and his team. I've heard nothing but great things from what they're doing, essentially just trying to make the fun... the harbor a lot more fun and safe without doing it with an iron fist, and that for both our visitors and locals. So, that's working out very well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have none. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through twenty-one. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Council, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. O'Neill?
Item nineteen, please.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter. Mrs. Dixon.
None, thank you.
Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor Pertham Duffield?
I have none.
I have none as well. Mayor Pertham Duffield, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move the balance of the consent calendars, calendar items one through twenty-one, with item nineteen pulled by Councilman O'Neill.
Mr. Duffield, Mr. Mayor, before you move forward, if you could include in that action in your dais, you have an extra attachment for item three, and you have a new revised resolution for item number five. If that were incorporated in your motion, that would include... that would complete our staff cleanup items. I always appreciate that.
Please.
Recreation and Senior Services Department. Last Saturday was our Green on the Green, our Eco, our Ecology Environmental Conference, or quite a lot of people here, Seminar on the Green. There were workshops and with our loyal and highly dedicated community, environmental response, or Emergency Response Team, our CERT people that represent all parts of our city, and they were here demonstrating. It was just a great day for all. I have an announcement from the, from Mr. Heatherton, our library. New Storytime and Concierge Service at Marina Park, speaking about Marina Park. Marina Park Concierge Service will now commence today, yesterday. Customers can place holds on library materials that come in from anywhere in the library system and pick them up at Marina Park, so saving time driving to the central library. And then there is also a weekly Storytime for children that has resumed. In our study session earlier this evening, we recognize Alzheimer's Month, and in fulfillment of that also, aligned with that, in parallel, Memories in Making Art exhibit at the library. The Newport Beach City Arts Commission presents an exhibit of artwork from the Memories in the Making program of Alzheimer's Orange County. Over 20 pieces created by program participants with Alzheimer's and mild dementia will be on display at the central library. And it's, Memories in the Making was created to provide a meaningful activity for persons with dementia while focusing on creative expression as a form of communication. And it's something that gives back to patients, families, and the community that no other program has been able to duplicate. So, look forward to people participating in that. On a more serious note, in terms of city finances, I sit on ACCOC, which stands for the Associated California Cities of Orange County. I am the local government finance chair, and in that role, I participated in a group of Huntington Beach, Laguna, Irvine, and Fullerton elected officials to go up to Sacramento. This was in August, August 25th, Friday, August 25th, and met with the Investment Committee of Calpers to learn more about how the public employee pension funds are invested. It was really an eye-opening experience. And what really, and we'll be talking more about this in our Finance Committee this week. I'll get to that in a moment. But the stakeholders, just to emphasize, in the, in the corpus of the fund, the funds that are held and invested by Calpers, the stakeholders, not only the cities, we are called the employers, but the employees, the public employees themselves. We want, our mission is to protect those pensions, and there's just a lot of issue, many issues that can be addressed to improve and ensure the protection of those pensions as well as to perhaps reduce the steadily and relentless growth of the employer costs associated with it. So, we're all working together, the electeds, as well as some of the employee groups, not necessarily yet in Newport Beach, we hope to get there. We're working on strategic initiatives to address the rapidly growing catastrophe, as ACCOC would call it, of the unfunded pension liabilities faced today by many of our communities. Calpers investment returns, or lack thereof frankly, have a direct impact on how cities, including Newport Beach, pay to keep the fund balanced. So, it's really an important and timely issue. I'm glad we've all stepped up at our other elected cities and other electeds, so we are putting together a really solid program as we go forward. But there'll be more to report on this as I report at our Finance Committee meeting at 3:00 PM on Thursday, September 14th. And one other, two other announcements. September 18th, I have a town hall at 6:30 PM at Marina Park, and one of the topics will be the Peninsula Crosswalk Study, and I know this is of serious interest to all Peninsula residents, safety in our crosswalks. And speaking of safety, one final reminder is to all of you who are listening, stand-up paddleboarders, be aware that Coast Guard regulations and California harbors and navigation codes require life vests and whistles with you at all times. Harbor Patrol sheriff's teams are enforcing these regulations with warnings and tickets. So, let it be known that we have warned you. I know people who have gotten tickets for not having a life preserver onboard. The rental companies are doing this really well. It's the residents or permanent stand-up paddleboarders who enjoy our harbor on a regular basis who may not be aware that they too need life preservers and a whistle. So, that is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdman.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Avery?
Just briefly, I think it's like a long time ago, at least a month, after, the day after our council meeting, I attended the Police Youth Academy graduation, and that was really a great event, so well done by the officers that were there. And, but more importantly, the students that were there, it was just, it was really something, and the speeches that were made at the end of that were so well done. So, I was just, I was really impressed with it, and what a great program we have that our Police Department puts on. And the only other announcement I have is I've been involved in, with the Newport Harbor High School Mentor Program for five years, and tonight here, we have my latest mentee, Jose Ortiz, sitting over here, and he's a 16-year-old junior, soon to be 17, at Newport Harbor High School, with several advanced placement classes, and he's interested in city government. So, my last mentees have shown up being interested in a career in boating. But Jose is, is on a whole different track and has been, he's had this agenda for about a week now and has studied it thoroughly, and he's looking forward to seeing how it all plays out tonight. So, I'm just really happy to have him as my mentee this, this year and be able to sort of share this experience with him and obviously learn from his, from him as well. And I can tell you my, real quickly, my couple of brief conversations with him are not so brief, he's just an impressive person, really impressive, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Welcome, Jose. Mayor Pertham Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report on our trial transient mooring field, the top of the harbor, has turned out to be quite a success this summer. It's our third summer we've been doing it, and it offers much less pressure on our existing mooring field during the weekend. So, it, it was an idea that came a long time ago from the Harbor Commission, probably a decade ago, and finally, it's, it's, it's proven to be something of value, and hopefully the Harbor Commission can vet through that and maybe make it permanent. And also, I wanted to say hats off to the new harbor master, Dennis Durgan, and his team. I've heard nothing but great things from what they're doing, essentially just trying to make the fun, the harbor a lot more fun and safe without doing it with an iron fist, and that for both our visitors and locals. So, that, that's working out very well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have none. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 21. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Council, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. O'Neill?
Item 19, please.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter? Ms. Dixon?
None, thank you.
Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor Pertham Duffield?
I have none.
I have none as well. Mayor Pertham Duffield, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move the balance of the consent calendars, calendar items 1 through 21, with item 19 pulled by Councilman O'Neill.
Mr. Duffield, Mr. Mayor, before you move forward, if you could include in that action in your dais, you have an extra attachment for item 3, and you have a new revised resolution for item number 5. If that were incorporated in your motion, that would include, that would complete our staff cleanup items. I always appreciate that.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mayor Pertham Duffield and a second by Councilman Pieter. Any public comments on these consent calendar items? Please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the City Council, my name is Jim Mosher. It was many meetings back, I mentioned to you, the, the city of Benicia, California, where the consent calendar process is not as mysterious as it is in Newport Beach. And I, because the mayor there actually reads the titles of all of the items so that the people watching by video and the people in the audience know what is on the consent calendar, I had occasion to check that this morning, and I watched a recent meeting. It was not an aberration. The mayor does do that. The mayor reads the titles of all the consent calendar items, and I also noticed when she comes to the end of that, she invites either council members or members of the audience to pull the items for a separate discussion if they want, and they do their voting by polling. The clerk polls the council members, and if they want to vote no or recuse themselves on any item they just mentioned at that time, seems like a really nice way to do things. So, Newport Beach might be able to learn from that. My, my only comment about our current consent calendar tonight is kind of a trivial one, but item number 6 is announcing the completion of the Slurry Seal Program in Dover Shores. And I came through there, riding over here this afternoon, and the streets are all nicely repaved, but the striping has not returned on many of them, and the people there might wonder if the project is really completed, if it doesn't seem to be completed. So, I'm wondering if the striping of the streets after they're paved is a separate thing from the contract that we're saying is completed here or is part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Kiff, can you answer that question? I don't know that answer myself. Now, I'm curious.
I actually looked at Mr. Webb, or you catching Mr. Mosher's question, is about the Dover Slurry Seal Project, if the striping isn't in yet, does that still mean the project is complete, or does it need more, another step?
Yes, I'm sorry. The project is complete, we just have a couple touch-up striping areas, stop bars and things like that the contractor's still doing, but the slurry seal's complete at this point.
Thank you. That's how it's done, Jose. Feel free to pull one light in, by the way, if you like. Any other comments on consent calendar? All right, see none. Let's vote on the motion.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, item 19, staff.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
One second, yes.
I don't need a staff report on this. If I could just mention why I pulled it, that'd be probably enough.
Right.
So, for folks at home, the Newport Beach Library Foundation is donating $155,000 to the city of Newport Beach. Without the Newport Beach Library Foundation or the Friends of the Library, frankly, our library services would not be quite as amazing as they are. They'd probably still be very good, I'm sure Mr. Heatherton would say, but just not quite as spectacular. So, we don't always get to highlight great things up here, and I just want to highlight a great thing, which is the Newport Beach Library Foundation providing $155,000, which is going toward materials, services, and adult literacy. So, I move, well, I'll wait for public comment, but I'll move a staff recommendation afterward.
Excellent. Any public comments on this item? I see none and see no requests to speak from the dais. We have a motion, a second.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon and Council. My name is George Leslie, I live in Newport Shores. You'll be happy to know, I'm not here to badger you about West Coast highway improvements. So, I have an announcement. It's time to build sandcastles. October 1st, Sunday, October 1st, the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce will sponsor the 56th Annual Newport Beach Sandcastle Contest, and we would like to invite families, clubs, groups of friends, organizations, church groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, to come on down, build a sandcastle or a sand sculpture. You don't have to build a castle, you can build anything you like out of sand. It's a, this is at the State Beach, Corner del Mar, which is one of the nicest beaches anywhere around, so a great place to come with your family or friends, build a sandcastle, have a lot of fun. There's an entry fee of $30 for families, $40 for any other entrance. Teams will get some really cool T-shirts, and this year, our theme is Pirates of the Pacific. And we have Captain Jack will be there, okay, not Johnny Depp, but somebody who looks a lot like him to be there to welcome you, and it's just a great fun thing for groups and families to come on down and do that. If you'd like to enter, you just go on NewportBeach.com under Events and click on there to enter, or simply call the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. I have one more brief item, I'd like to comment on the Balboa Trolley. My wife and I went down on the Balboa Trolley on August 20th, which we went down there to Balboa Village because that happened to be the last day of the Bay Arcade before it closed after 70 years. I went there when I was eight years old, and this is the last time. Anyway, so it was kind of an afterthought. We live on the shores, it's a short hop down to Hoag Hospital Lower Campus to pick up the trolley and zip down there to Balboa Village. I noticed on the way down that the parking along Balboa Boulevard was virtually nonexistent. Parking was all full. But, so taking the trolley, it's just hop on, go down to the Balboa Village, jump off, do whatever you're gonna do, hop back on and go back up. On the way back, there was a lady with her young son, and they had boogie boards and beach toys and what have you, and she was saying, "This is so easy." Before, I had to worry about parking and what have you, this is just easy. So, it was very pleasant. One comment, though, the driver on the trolley was very non-communicative. We got on and there was no, like, "Hi, welcome aboard," nothing like that. It would have been nicer, especially if you were an out-of-town visitor, to get on and have the driver say, "Hi, make sure we're all on the same bus, we're going down to Balboa Village, and we'll stop here and there. Anybody have any questions, or can I help?" But no, she was just like a robot. So, that's just for future reference, but I hope it comes back next year. It was really a pleasant experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, City Council. My name is Bob Rush. Give me one second here. Here to follow up on a formal complaint that I submitted to the city last week. The city, this complaint, I believe, involves a violation of the First Amendment of perhaps at least one and many, perhaps many more individuals within this city. It stems from a California Public Records Act request that I had submitted several months ago. I obtained documents through that request. I obtained a copy of an email from former Mayor Keith Curry that is very concerning, and I believe is a First Amendment violation. It appears that the city, Dave Kiff, City Manager, Chief John Lewis, are maintaining some type of enemies hit list, some type of political adversary hit list. Mayor Curry establishes in the opening sentence factual existence of this database. He says, because, and I'm quoting, "Because I know there is a database on these types of folks, I would draw your attention to the comment section on the Daily Pilot story regarding Bob Rush's support for Scott." Goes on to address an individual or individuals. "I have no reason to believe that these persons, this person or persons, to be a threat or dangerous in any way, but as you see, he appears to ride the public comment circuit." So, what he is doing is alerting, a former mayor is alerting, a police chief and city manager to add a name or names to a database of names because of comments. At first, I didn't believe what I was reading, and then, within a few days, I got confirmation that former Mayor Curry had confirmed the existence of this database list with both the Orange County Register and the Stu News, Tom Johnson Stu News, and I'll quote you what he explained to Tom Johnson. "On inter-agency basis, law enforcement exchanges information on frequent council gadflies who have the potential for violence." Now, I take an exception to his use of the term gadfly because it's very subjective and arbitrary. I also would note that former Mayor Curry is former mayor, he's not even an active councilman at this point, and here he is in April of this year, this is the date of the email. He's referring person or persons' names into this database maintained by or influenced by either Chief John Lewis or City Manager Kiff. And by the way, there was no rebuttal or refuted, there was no refute or disassociation with this database of names by either the city manager or the chief Lewis. And I would imagine that if I was involved in law or the city management, I would absolutely refute the existence of this that appears on its face to be a violation, and I beg for more time, sir.
How mu—
Minute or two, minute or two.
A full minute? I'll give you thirty seconds.
Okay, full minute.
No, I'll give thirty seconds.
So, I asked for the sake of the city, I submitted my complaint, I asked for the answer to, where is this list maintained? I'd like, I believe it's the best interest of the community to find out if a database of gadflies is being maintained by the city chief or by the city manager or by anybody else in the city administration. It affects everybody that comes up to this podium. It affects everybody that goes into the newspaper and discusses as a public discourse on politics. Now, I believe this to be political because Curry goes on to say, "I have no reason to believe this person to be a threat or dangerous in any way," but he still referred this person into a database. So, I believe, and I respectfully request of you, Mayor, could you and the administration answer that question tonight? Does this database list of names exist? And where is it, and how is it, how is it managed?
Okay. Are you down for public comments?
I am, sir, unless there's questions, unless I have, have been clear.
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
For, for the record, I am not aware of a list that exists. I saw the email exchange regarding it. Mr. Kiff, would you like to answer some of those questions?
I don't know of any list.
Okay. Any questions from the dais on this matter? Generally, is there a time for comment at the end?
I have one question, sir.
It's not the appropriate format. Could you please put in email? It's Russian. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Newhouse, and I'm here to talk about the catastrophic fire that occurred on Veterans Day of November 11th last year. I've got a couple photographs here that I find most intriguing. I don't know whether you can see them or someone can pass them along to you, but one is of the fire itself on the West Building, and then the other is showing the building, West Building, before the fire totally demolished and destroyed the structure. There were 40 storage units in two buildings, about, I think, 10,000 square feet in each building. Of those, the, the fire started in unit number 20. I happen to have been in unit 16, 60 feet away at the time that fire apparently started. So, I think I have probably one of the most unique views of what happened that night at approximately 2:30 in the morning, and what I saw was horrifying. Of the 40 storage units, not one, not one of the 40 was saved, and I understand that we were about six minutes away from the nearest fire station, and actually, there were two other fire stations in Costa Mesa that were also about six minutes away. So, we had three fire stations within about six minutes of that fire. 2:30 in the morning, no traffic, slow down. Not one bit of water was put on that West Building by the time I left to go to Hoag Hospital for smoke inhalation. The East Building was totally engulfed in fire, east to west, south to north, with one stream of water going into it, which was largely wasted because the building was totally engulfed in fire. So, I'm here mainly to talk about, it would be nice to get some sort of report detailed, and I mean very detailed, minute by minute, if not second by second, of those first hour or so of the response time and so on. It would be nice to have an independent report done outside of the city of Newport because I think there is some culpability on the Fire Department and Police Department of Newport, and so you have a built-in conflict of interest here, tendency to maybe cover up what went on at that time. So, first choice would be an independent or neutral detailed report, or if not that, at least an in-house report, and also to compare those with the earlier Hickson Fire, also on Production Place area that occurred, I think, maybe 20 years ago or so, a major fire that I'm sure most of you are probably aware of, the Hickson Metal Fire. So, I'll call the Hickson Fire, Production Place Fire Number One, the Veterans Day Fire that I experienced up close and personal. I was probably the biggest tenant there, I had storage units 13, 15, and 16. Also, I had lofts in all three of them, so I had about 2,800 square feet of material. And if you look at those photographs there, where the two main streams of water are going onto that building, that's probably my unit, 16 and 15, because I had a lot of fuel, wood, and I had many thousands of books and other things that were destroyed. Transparency in government, that report, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is George Schroeder, and I've been a 29-year resident on the Peninsula. I want to kind of touch on what Councilmember Diane Dixon mentioned earlier tonight regarding the concierge library services at the Marina Park. Quite a few months back, the West Newport Beach Association did discuss that, that we would like to have a concierge service there. We did take a vote, and it was a unanimous vote to have it there. I've been a 29-year resident. I think, when you look at the city of Newport Beach, there's lots of fantastic reasons to live here. At the top of that, of that list is our library system. I've have probably checked out hundreds, perhaps even thousands of items from the Newport Beach library system over the last 29 years, and I have donated probably quite a few books to the youth book store in the main branch. So, and over the years, I reserve books, and I would have to go to either the Balboa Branch or the Mariners Branch, and, and I would have to decide which branch was easier to get to. And oftentimes, I found the Mariners Branch was easier to get to, even though I live on 35th Street, because downtown Balboa can be hard to get to. So, and my friends who live in Newport Coast, they could go to a concierge service in the community center in Newport Coast. So, I just want to say how grateful we are, and I wanted to thank the library director for providing this library service. I'm sure there's lots of families who live in Newport Shores, they have kids, and they want to check out items, and it's just easier to get in and out of that parking lot there. The parking lot at the Balboa Branch is so small, so again, thank you very much, and I just want to give a shout-out to the great job our library system does. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Please come forward. You can stand at opposing podiums and—
Thank you.
Mayor Muldoon, City Council, I want to thank you for the 50th Anniversary Proclamation for the Newport Beach Historic Society. I'm Bernie Svalstad, president of that organization, and I want to let the people know, they're watching, that we're looking for oral histories from people in the community that would like to have their history known to people in Newport Beach, and we're also saving artifacts that we'd like to have, if any of you'd like to get rid of them. We'd like to help you. And we have a fabulous 50-year anniversary program, and it's at the Balboa Pavilion at Banquet Room on September 22nd, about a week from this Friday, 6:00, 6:00 PM. We have 15 restaurants that are going to be there to serve you, kind of to taste the history instead of taste of Newport, and we have such restaurants as Newport Landing, Nothing Bunk Cakes, Royal Thigh, The Alley, Blue Beet, Bungalow, Canary Crab Cooker, Quiet Woman, Woody's Wharf, Village Inn, and some others. So, we'd like to see you there. It's $50 each, and it'd help preserve the history of Newport Beach. We also on the program. We also on the program have the McFadden's. The McFadden's are kind of the Irvine company of the eighteen, late eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds, and we have their relatives, grandsons, there to talk about their recollection of the history of Newport Beach and their family. Plus, we have some other historic figures of Newport to talk about the history of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Ty Hanson. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa, and I would also like to speak about the Production Place Fire that happened about ten months ago on November 11th, 2016. And one of the things I wanted to make sure is, I wanted the people in the audience to see this picture. These were two ten-thousand-square-foot buildings that burned to the ground. That's about the size of ten houses that burned to the ground. My unit was right in the middle of this. You're looking at my unit burning to the ground. We lost everything. Thirty tenants lost everything here. It was a pretty big deal for us. And I'd like to ask, again, I was here about a month ago, and I'd like to ask the council members if you're going to conduct some sort of formal investigation into this, independent, like Mr. Newhouse said, independent of anybody else. I don't know. I'm not sure exactly how this process works, but the way I understand it, you're voted in by, you know, the citizens of the city, and you're our liaisons to be able to discuss problems with the city. That's the way I believe it to work. So, that's the purpose for me being here, is I want to find out what, if anything, you're going to do. Are you going to have a meeting in a private session or a special session, or what's going to happen about this? Because this is a big deal to me. I lost everything here, and I still haven't recovered. Look at me. I mean, all my dress clothes were in a box in my unit, and, you know, my shoes and everything were there. I lost everything I owned there, and it means a lot to me. And I have questions, too. Number one, I want to know why there wasn't one fire extinguisher on either ten-thousand-square-foot building, not one. And there was people on site immediately upon the start of the fire that could have put the fire out if one fire extinguisher had been there, and it didn't exist. How does that happen in this city? I don't know how that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Pieter.
None.
Mrs. Dixon?
None.
Mr. Hurdman?
We did last week have a water quality, tidelines committee meeting. The work that is, and I've said this before, that's going on by that committee, in my opinion, is phenomenal. And Councilman Avery is the chair of the committee. I'm the vice chair of the committee. And I sent a request to our city manager this week that we possibly consider having the work of this committee presented during a study session so that the entire council can be informed and as impressed as I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor Portum Duffield?
I have none.
And I have none as well. On to public hearings. Staff report, if one needed, on item twenty-two. Seeing no requests for a staff report, any public comments on this? I'm going to open up the public hearing. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, and members of the city council, my name, which, if there was a list of gadflies, would probably be up towards the top, although hopefully you don't regard me as dangerous, that name is Jim Mosher. This item, which I don't think it's announced, but it is on the board up there, is the annual report about our community development block grants. This is an item because of the thickness of the report. Mr. Campbell and Mr. Whitehead spend considerable amount of time on. It's not obvious that too many people in Newport Beach read this because there don't seem to be any comments about it. I would be curious if the people we submit this to at the federal government or wherever give us any feedback about it, so we know whether we wrote a good report or a bad one. I did try to read most of it this afternoon, and it seemed to me much of it was talking about programs in Orange County that are only very tangentially related to the things that we send, spend our grant money on. So, I do not know if that's the kind of report the people this is being sent to are expecting. And then I tried to understand the financial part of it. Man without our consultant here, I don't know if Mr. Campbell can answer these questions or not, but on the next to the last page, it's showing you kind of the financial synopsis of the state of our block grant fund. It shows a starting balance of one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, and we ended the year with one-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. That's a little hard to tell from this. I think that's the injection of money from the sale of the Balboa Theater. That probably explains the difference. But when I look on this page, and it says that we have one-million-two-hundred-thousand dollars in it, if I go back to an earlier page, which is, these appendices are not at all self-explanatory what they're showing. There's an earlier page here, staff report, page twenty-two forty-four, and it is showing another two-point-four million dollars that seems to be carried over from some earlier date. So, at the end of page twenty-two dash forty-five, it's showing we have a balance of three-million-six-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars to draw from. And I am just trying to understand what that two-million-four-hundred-thousand from a decade ago, it looks like, or possibly from the year 2000. What is that about, and why do we have these two different balances in the account, one showing one million, another showing three-point-six million? Thank you.
Thank you. Any idea?
Yeah, Mr. Whitehead is here today. Part of these reports are the HUD-generated reports out of the federal system. They do reflect multi-years of grants, and that's one of the reasons why the grants balances are so high, but I think Clint may be a little better to answer the question specifically.
Appendices, the appendices are always a bit challenging. These are reports generated out of HUD's database. The million-dollar figure is accurate, and it does reflect the injection of the Balboa Theater sales proceeds. The additional two-point-four million actually reflects the original principal balance of the Section 108 loan. It's an error in HUD's database of reports, and so I commend you for picking that out. But it is not actually part of our balance. Those funds have been expended. It's a fairly arcane and complex database, and it's a glitch in the report.
Thank you. If anyone gets a good grade today, it's Jim Mosher, A-plus. Any other, any other comments on this item? He doesn't even care. He's not even impressed by that high mark. There you go. Okay, seeing none. Councilman O'Neill?
Jim, there were a couple things in this that I just want to ask you about. One of them is the, let's see if I, the Council on Aging Ombudsman. This is something I had learned about, and frankly, I think more residents in Newport Beach ought to know about. Would you mind just briefly mentioning what that, what that is and how CDBG funds are used to help fund that?
Certainly. The Council on Aging of Southern California provides omnibus and services, and what they really do is they visit long-term care facilities and nursing homes in the community. They do, they actually go in unannounced, and they inspect the place, and they look around, and they talk to the residents there and find out what their needs are. And in some cases, these folks are really not able to advocate for themselves. And so, they're obviously not acting as a custodian, but they're, what they're doing is trying to make sure they're getting proper care. And so, we provide a modest amount of funding for this organization. They've been in this, in this business for quite a number of years. But it's a service that we felt was a good one for this community because it's an aging community, and just try to look out for those seniors who really have difficult challenges to look out for themselves. And so, you know, I don't know the accomplishments this year. Clint, how many have we served this year?
I believe you and I—
It's about thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah.
And then the other item I wanted to just briefly highlight in this is the transitional homes for domestic violence victims that are also funded out of this. Would you mind just briefly talking about that?
Certainly. That program, Human Options, provides a transitional housing shelter for victims of domestic violence. They have a shelter that's, they provide services. It's not an emergency shelter, but it's a transition shelter from an emergency shelter back to getting back on their feet and out and becoming more productive in their lives. We did serve seven Newport Beach residents this last year with a very modest amount of funding.
Okay, thanks, Jim. And I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second. We've had public comments. Seeing no requests to speak, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-three, staff report is, if one is requested by the dais. Seeing no requests, I'll open up to the public hearing. Public comments on this item, please come forward. This is item twenty-three, amendments to setbacks. Seeing no public speakers on this item. Public hearing is now closed. Any council comments? Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I just want to, I recognize that this is a technical fix originated by the city staff and community development, and I want to commend them for identifying, as I understand it, that technical glitch when all of our planning documents and zoning documents were transferred from manual hard copy into the digitized form, and there are little glitches that occur. So, this is an example of a technical specialist identifying. There was a variance in the setbacks that happened to be in Lido in my district, and before the residents even identified that there was a problem, the city staff has identified this. So, I just want to say thank you to the staff for constantly working to make sure that our records are accurate and reliable. So, thank you. And I'll make a motion to support this, I guess, as long as I'm speaking. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There are no requests to speak on this item. Are there any public comments on this? I did that, yep. Okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
On to the next item, item number twenty-four, staff.
So, similarly, Mr. Mayor, I know you folks have talked about this at least a couple of times. We are prepared to do some staff comments, but if you've, if you felt like you've had enough of non-exclusive commercial waste hauler franchises, we can cease and desist.
Will there ever be enough? I don't know. There are a couple items that I find points you want to resolve. We'll open up the public speakers, and then we'll come back to the dais for that. Any requests to speak on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The decision before you seems to be whether you're going to vote tonight on a three-year contract or put off until the next meeting and vote on a seven-year contract. I wanted to comment on that. I believe the staff had a good reason for wanting or proposing that the term of the new franchises should be three years with a two-year extension, which is in the year 2020, if I'm not mistaken. We are anticipating that there could be major changes or, in the state requirements for meeting recycling, which would require rethinking how the franchises should operate. Procedurally, there is a number of points that I would like to make. Number one, if you look at the minutes, which I did read from the last meeting, there was a resolution that was continued from that meeting to this one, which was Resolution 2017 dash fifty-two, in which the city council was approving the new contract template. I don't know if it's important that you separately approved that or not, but it somehow got missing in tonight's discussion. So, the minutes of last meeting said you were going to be voting on approving the template. It doesn't seem to be on the, on the thing tonight. There's some confusion in the staff report about if you followed the alternate option of, of voting on seven-year contracts at the next meeting, what resolution you would be adopting. Half the time, it says Resolution 2017 dash sixty, and the one that's actually in the packet here says 2017 fifty-nine. You actually just passed 2017 dash fifty-nine in connection with the setbacks. So, the staff report is partly an error about that. And second, if you went with the other option of adopting the ordinance tonight, the ordinance does not have the proper contract attached to it. You have an ordinance in here that would let you adopt the three-year contracts, and that, one, if you look at it, is not, not the one that has three years with two extensions. So, there's a number of procedural mix-ups in this. The ordinance is Attachment C, and the, that ordinance says it's adopting three-year contracts with two-year extensions, or two extensions. The, the contract that's attached to it is a seven-year contract. So, I leave it to you to work it all out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none. Councilman O'Neill?
Just a couple of questions. One of the points Jim made earlier was one that I had made at the last meeting where we were discussing this, which is if we go to a longer contract and the state changes its rules and regulations, the contract anticipates something like that might happen and would, and the solidweight franchisees would agree to be bound by the new state laws, correct?
Correct. We could change and adapt the agreement to any new requirements given to us by the state.
Okay. And one of the reasons that there is a, that we had discussed this also, one of the reasons we had shift, at least discussed it, discussed shifting to a longer term is that with new requirements going in at both the state and the local franchise level for what they need to do from a safety requirement, for example, it would, might require additional financing or additional increase in cost to some of the franchise waste haulers. And so, a longer contract term would permit them to, for example, go out and obtain that financing better than the three-year. So, is that, is that part of the thought process and why we are talking three versus seven?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I tend to agree that, I believe I said something to this effect in the study session, that with our ability to amend or revoke this agreement unilaterally, there is no need to restrict the haulers to a shorter term. So, I would be supportive of, of an amendment or a change that would allow seven or ten year. I'm pretty minimal to my colleagues on the dais, but I think that, as Councilman O'Neill pointed out, that's, allows them to obtain financing and work cohesively with the city. Councilwoman Dixon?
May I ask, Mayor, did you just make a motion?
No, I just chimed in.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion just to put the item on the table. I concur. I do support a seven-year contract period for the reasons discussed. I think it just allows businesses to secure capital financing. And the reason capital financing is important in this industry, now that I've become a so-called—
Should I second it for discussion? You made a seven-year motion, right?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pieter. Now that I've become half of an expert on waste hauling, I've learned a lot in this process, so I'm grateful for it. So, I do support, for the reasons for waste haulers, to have a longer period of time to get a return on their financial investment, and the financial investment is really driven to equipment and their vehicles, their fleet vehicles. What I have also learned in this process of understanding that we, correct me if I'm wrong, we have thirty-seven waste haulers who serve the city of Newport Beach. Is that correct, Mr.?
We have, we have thirty-seven currently, and we've gotten applications from twenty-eight of the current haulers and two new ones. So, we're, we'll be at thirty.
That seems like a lot, but I'm willing to be supportive of that continuing because it's good for small business, and I understand on certain types of waste hauling that there's certain specialists. But what I have also learned is that some of the smaller businesses, and I'm very supportive of the smaller businesses, but that they do not typically have the clean natural gas vehicles to serve the city of Newport Beach. And I understand that many of these smaller haulers are not permitted to operate in other cities because they do not have the clean fleet of vehicles. But we do not have any regulations, I guess, and I'm not proposing any, for clean vehicles. But what I would like to do alternatively— But what I would like to do alternatively, and maybe this is like a revision or an update to the motion, is to ask staff to help us think through how we can create a voluntary incentive program to these smaller haulers who do not have clean natural gas facilities or vehicles, that within that, this seven-year period, maybe we provide an incentive, I'm just thinking out loud, that they go for ten years perhaps to make it possible for them to make that investment in clean natural gas cleaner equipment to serve our community and not create air pollution. But I want to make it, I don't want to make it onerous or punitive. I want to make it voluntary so that there is an incentive. And incidentally, if these companies were to make that type of investment, that would allow them to be competitive in other communities that have that air pollution requirement or clean vehicle requirement, so that would enhance their business prospects. So that's my idea. Mr. Kiff, Mr. Pisani, you have a thought about how we could do that?
I do think we could take a look at that and see what, and come back to you. I think it still allows you to take this action tonight if you wanted to add that as an additional amendment to your motion. That would be appropriate in terms of just providing a broader incentive program. As, as I think you know, we're a little concerned about rejiggering the years so that some were on sevens and some were on tens, because our overall goal is to make sure, like, everybody ends on the November eighth, 2024. So there may be other incentives, though. There's AKMD funds, there could be state funds to help do that. As long as you're open to that, we'd be happy to...
Yes, so seven years and maybe look for some offsetting funds from the state or county government. Mr. Piattar, do you support that amendment to the motion?
Yeah, so the point of clarification then is you're moving the seven-year approval of the agreement tonight, but with direction to staff to come back with an amendment to, with some sort of incentive to encourage the smaller operators to have cleaner vehicles?
And the time period would be in about six months. It doesn't have to be for the next meeting necessarily or some shorter period of time.
Right, so this agreement will be approved tonight and a second hearing, and it would just be staff direction to come back with some modification or direction. I'm in support of that as the second. Thanks.
And just for clarification, you're moving items D and E. Is that correct? That's the seven-year option, but I just want to make sure we're moving the whole item.
Definitely, yes.
Okay, thank you. And second agrees? Uh, Councilman Piattar?
Resolved? Great. Right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Let's vote.
Motion car-
Just briefly, there was one amendment to the resolution. There was another hauler that was added to it. Did you have that information? I just want to make sure that's what you were voting on as well.
Hauler California Waste Services LLC was added to the list of haulers, so that just adds one more to that list in the resolution.
So that section MM?
Technically, alphabetically, it would become E, and then everything would push down.
Excellent. All right.
If you don't mind, just for the record, would you mind voting again on the item with that amendment? Because we didn't mention it before you voted.
Yeah, so Councilwoman Dixon made amendment. Scott Piattar seconded this amendment, or this motion. This motion now includes the amendment previously mentioned by the city clerk.
Correct, the addition of California Waste Services in addition to Councilmember Dixon's amendment.
Excellent. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
That wasn't the tough one. This one is. We have a public hearing to conduct. Thank you, staff. This is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on protest or objections to the proposed sewer rate adjustment. All property owners who are opposed to the sewer rate adjustment must submit their protest in writing to the city clerk prior to the closing of the public hearing. Counsel, would you like a staff report on this item? I'm not seeing a request for a staff report on this item at this time. The public hearing is now open. Please identify yourself and your property prior to speaking if you're going to speak on this item. Ms. Skinner? Uh, no, you can be, it's open to anyone who would like to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. Before I speak on this issue, I just want to do something I've thought about many times. I want to just thank you for your service. I would like to be home in a nice, warm house, and I bet a lot of you would too, but to be out here and serving our city the way you do, all seven of you, it's really impressive. Thank you very much for that. But I'm here actually because of passion for clean water in our bay, and that goes directly to the item in front of you right now, and that's the sewer rate adjustment. Most of you have heard me speak about this before, so it's no surprise that I want you to support it tonight. And I would like to see you continue your seven-o votes, actually. It would be nice to see another one of those. It is important for our bay. It's not just because you like to swim. It's not like we just like to boat, but it's a visitor magnet, and it's important for our bay that we prevent, be prevented to the degree that we can, any spills that can be prevented by the maintenance that we're talking about with the sewer fee increases. So I'm here being very hopeful tonight that you will see it the way I do, and that it's extremely important for our city, and that our city staff has done a great job of packaging this in a way that's fair to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I do not live at a property that is being assessed for the sewer fee, so I'm not speaking as a protester, but I am speaking as a commenter and gadfly. In the absence of a staff report or any comment from you before the public speaks, I have no way of knowing what you're thinking about this. I would like to reinforce Ms. Skinner's position that this increase is very much needed and overdue. And I would, in the past, have criticized the exact details of the implementation of that, but because we don't have meters for sewers, we don't know exactly how much individual people use. There is no system of making assessments for sewers that are going to be perfect and absolutely equitable. The system that is being proposed tonight is a better rate system than we have presently, and the increase in fees is needed. I would even question whether the increase that you're imposing on the people in our sewer system are actually adequate. I was at this morning at a study session of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, which is where my wastewater goes, and as I may or may not have told you at the study session, they invest close to $2 million a year in keeping up with capital improvements on their wastewater plumbing, which is arguably, it's the same number of miles, same number of pump stations, and arguably newer than this. So you might question whether this is actually an adequate increase to meet Newport Beach's needs. The only comment I really want to make and feel passionate about this is my interest in government transparency makes me think that the rates, the rate schedule that you adopt after a Proposition 218 hearing, it's a big deal. It's something that happens only very infrequently. That rate schedule, in my opinion, belongs in the municipal code where it is now. Currently, you can see there what the sewer rates are. You can see what the water rates are. If you look at the water rates, you'll see that they have not been touched, and in fact, there hasn't been a Proposition 218 hearing about them because you see the rates ended at 2014, and for the last three years, we've been muddling along with what we had. It may make you wonder whether we need to reevaluate those or not. I realize that other governments in Newport Beach seems to be following suit, want to put the rates into what's called a master fee schedule. That's really just not appropriate for these kind of rates. If you really wanted to do that, the ordinance that you're adopting would say, "Look at the master fee schedule for the rates." However, we don't do that because the master, these are rates that according to the municipal code change on January first. The master fee schedule is not updated in that way. It's just not compatible with that. So you're actually saying the rates are off in some resolution somewhere. And it's not good transparency. You should just put them in the municipal code where they are now. Update them every five years after you have a hearing like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? All right, all written protests must have been received by the city clerk at this time, and that after this time, no more written protests may be submitted. The public hearing and forty-five day notice period are now closed. At this time, the city clerk will tabulate the protests. Madam Clerk?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, thirteen protests have been received in opposition to the proposed sewer rate adjustment. Thirteen of those protests were received from property owners, and no protests were received from non-property owning customers. In addition, the city received one written correspondence in support of the proposed rates. So in absence of a majority of protests received in writing from the city's property owners, should the majority of the city councils support the sewer rate adjustment, it is appropriate for the city council to open a discussion amongst the council and vote to introduce an ordinance amending Section 14.24.065 of Title 14 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to sewer use charge and pass a second reading on September 26th.
Seeing we do not have a majority of protests, I'll bring this back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Councilman O'Neil?
Sure, I'll kick it off. So this is one of those votes no one really enjoys making because it deals with rate increases, and absolutely no one in Newport Beach, I suppose with the exception of Mrs. Skinner, would come and advocate on a Tuesday night to ask us to raise the rates. And there's been fortunately a substantial amount of public awareness campaign and education on this, and so I just want to say thank you, George, for all of the work that you have done on this. As, I mean, frankly, it's kind of hard because this is one of the biggest things you're going to be, you're going to be doing right, you know, before you move, you retire. So I just want to say thank you for all the effort on something this difficult. You know, folks, this is, we have our general fund. You can spend anything you want that's legal. We have our restricted funds, which allows us to spend things that are legally restricted to something. And then you have our enterprise funds. Most people don't know what that is. Well, that's basically a utility fund where you can, you have to spend no more than you take in, essentially. You can't profit from it, but it's about as close to a business as you get at the city level. And we've been operating at a deficit since 2010 in our sewer fund, which is a problem. And that was saved frankly only by some, about a $3 million transfusion, transition from the general fund into the sewer fund. One thing a lot of folks need to remember, a lot of people, especially in District Seven, do not have the city as their sewer fund, as the operator for their sewers. That's Irvine Ranch Water District. Mr. Mosher got up here earlier and talked about the fact that he does not have the city sewer system either. He has Mesa Water District. We've, we've got three different sewer systems inside Newport Beach. Fortunately, they all work together, but they're different rate structures. And so we need to remember that when we're working through the general fund. Of course, it's still better than operating at a deficit, but that's about the second worst thing we can do. So as we move along on this, we talk about responsibility and we talk about fiscal preparedness, and frankly, that's what we're doing up here right now. It's just, it's just not fun. So I'll, I'll listen to other comments first.
Councilman Piattar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time when we first aired this in public hearing, I proposed alternative rates. These rates are not going up in the way that I would like to go up. The rates are adequate, and the rates will cover the cost. And it's important that this fund, like Councilman O'Neil pointed out, needs to be self-sufficient and not depend on the general fund, which includes payers or rate payers from other districts. Our utility costs, our utility department is very efficient. Mr. Murdoch has left a wonderful legacy over thirty-seven plus years, and he's done a magnificent job of both the sewer and the water and keeping the costs reasonable. Our previous council kicked the can down the road for over ten years. The sewer rates have not been raised since 2006, so this is something that needs to be done. It's, I still am hoping that we'll come back with a tax cut to the general fund, maybe in the business license tax reform, but in the case of the sewer rates, this is an overdue task that previous politicians refused to face. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Yes, I also support this for the reasons previously stated, but also would just like to say that, you know, as, on council at least, I feel, and I know all of us do, there's a lot of bells and whistles that go on in this town, but one of our fundamental responsibilities is safety and the protection of the health and the environment and to, for residents to get the critical services they need, and this is one of them, of course. It's not glorious, and no one really sees it, but if there's a problem, we really hear about it, and nobody's happy, and the environment is, it can be compromised. And I know I do, and I believe we all sort of take it for granted, but we have a phenomenal group of people in this town that have made these systems work and almost seamlessly, and maintenance and replace of aging pipes is just critical to our infrastructure, and an ongoing program like we've maintained in the city for years is critical. And certainly, George Murdoch's been a part of that, and we've all had the tours. We've all been introduced to this system and to the complexity and the challenges. And I'll also finish just by saying we're extremely fortunate, I as a resident, to live in this town that is so well-run, particularly in this regard, of municipal services. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. I too will join the chorus of support so far. I think it is important. It's timely. I commend Mr. Murdoch and your consummate patience to adjust from a year or so ago when we came forward and you've adjusted downward. This is for people to understand. This is a user fee. You use, you use it, you pay precisely to the penny of what that use is costing the enterprise to manage and operate and repair and maintain our sewage pipes. I often think it's a euphemism when it's referred to wastewater. It is raw sewage that we are preventing from entering our harbor. If we, if their pipe were to break, if we lived east of here in another city, Yorba Linda Brea, et cetera, it would take days before the raw sewage would eventually go anywhere, and it would be stopped obviously long before. But if there is a pipe that breaks, our eighty, sixty, eighty-year-old pipes that would malfunction or break, it immediately, within moments, goes in, do you have a picture of that? Goes into our harbor. It's not a pretty sight, and this is our insurance policy. We hope that never happens, but for this modest $2 a month increase, do you have that?
There's a couple here of some of the closures on the beach and...
Well, this is what hap, the harbor, the bay is the city's economic driver. As Mr. Piattar, I guess, and Mr. Duffield did an economic impact report of the value of, economic value of our harbor to our quality of life in Newport Beach, our economic quality of life, and the harbor is critical. If these beaches are closed, the harbor is closed, the people can't swim, sail, or conduct business on the harbor, we have a big problem. And so this is our insurance policy. So this doesn't look pretty. This is what would happen, so it's not a nice topic. But I just want to thank you, and that's enough. That's the reality. It is critical to our livelihood. I also want to just call attention to two things. Mr. Piattar mentioned the rates have not increased since 2006, and as he said, others have kicked, other councils have kicked this can down the road, and I will say, the road is at a dead end. We cannot kick it any longer. We are here to serve the people and do what's best for the people of Newport Beach and to protect our quality of life and our water systems, and this is a good way to do it. It's what it costs is what people will pay for. If you don't use it, you don't pay for it. So I guess that's your personal choice. So I will be supporting this. Do we have a motion?
Not yet.
Well, I'm happy to make a motion to support this. User fee that for the first time in eleven years of a rate increase, that puts the city of Newport Beach still in the middle of the rates, comparable rates of other communities in Orange County. We are not anywhere near the highest or the top third. We're in the middle. We are not anywhere near the highest or the top third, we're in the middle. So it's fair, it's equitable, and it's the right thing to do. So thank you, Mr. Murdoch. Thank you, staff.
Mayor puts on Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think this is working. Is it working? Hello? Barely working. I just wanted to point out that our former leaders of our city were faced with a pretty awful recession, okay? Pretty awful recession, and they were faced with having to make a dollar go as far as they could, so I'm sympathetic to that. However, as time went on, you know, you'd wonder why we went ahead and built this before we addressed our pipes, but aside from that, I do recognize that that was a big factor. But besides from all that, I know we are getting the best value for our dollar that you could possibly imagine in the department that our boy George Murdoch heads up. I know he could have made a lot of money in the private sector as a businessman, and I just, I'm happy you're retiring, and I'm sad, because you look at projects like a businessman, and you do things very creatively, so I know deep down that whatever, I'm not big on sewer, but I know you have probably got this thing down, as I said, for our best cluck for our buck, and I appreciate you, George, so much. You are an amazing employee there, and I have to say we're going to really, really miss you. And I have a sore throat, so I have a lagering thing, but George, thank you so much, and I will be supporting this, and especially for all your hard work doing it the way you did it. Thanks.
Sir, a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Dixon and a second by Councilman Avery. Do we have any other requests to speak on this item? Seeing none, I believe that concludes the public hearing component, and we are ready to vote. Let's vote.
With Mayor Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Please hold the pause. Onto current business, item number 26. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, so this item is a proposal to purchase the real property located at 2807 Newport Boulevard. This is currently closed McDonald's site, and Simone Jurgis is here, our new community development director. This is actually his third appearance before you, but tonight, but I just want to make sure that folks know he was our, he's our new replacement of Kim Brandt, so welcoming Simone. And we are here, we probably would like to give you a really brief staff report, just because you've gotten a number of emails about this, if you don't mind, kind of talk about how we look at Fire Station site, and then we'll turn that back to you.
That'd be appreciated, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Appreciate it. With me is Lauren Whitlinger, she is a real property administrator. Again, this is the purchase of real property at 2807 Newport Boulevard, and really, the purpose of the purchase is to relocate Fire Station 2. A little bit of history and background, the existing fire station is over 60 years old, and it's slated as a CIP replacement project, and so it's just, that's part of our schedule of just replacing our existing facilities. It is dated, it is out of seismic code requirements. Now, looking at the existing site, if we were to replace the current fire station where it's at, and we have some limitations on the site constraints, right now, with some additional kind of street dedication there, we would, the site would be about 11, a little over 11,000 square feet. Our challenge with the existing site is that we don't have any pull-through access for our fire trucks, in the sense that you want the fire trucks to drive through the garage bay. Right now, for Fire Station 2, we actually have to back in to the garage bay, and that causes some challenges for our fire crews because they have to go out into the middle of the street and stop traffic and direct it back in. And you think that'd be a simple process, but when you do it on a daily basis, some of the other drivers that come down that boulevard on 32nd Street don't really follow direction and don't really stop for our fire personnel, so it is a concern for us. If we can go to the next slide, Lauren. So this is our current fire station right now, and you could see that towards the left of this photo, this is where we have our Lido Hotel under construction right now. So, the question is really becoming down now, where do our fire personnel, fire personnel park their actual personal vehicles? Right now, they're sharing it a little bit on-site and on the adjacent shopping center. We have about five spaces on our adjacent shopping center. So when you look at our existing property, it's becoming very constrained. It's hard, we can't, we can't drive through the, it's really hard to do a drive-through into that parking garage, and at the same time, parking all the city vehicles. I just learned today actually that our existing truck, our ladder truck, is actually the short version of a ladder truck. If, when it comes due, time to replace that ladder truck, it's going to be the longer version. They don't make these short versions anymore. Okay? Here are some conceptual design that we've come up with with regards to if we were to just continue to build on that existing station. You know, we really don't have enough parking spaces to host our fire personnel. At the same time, you really can't make that turn into the fire station side to have a kind of a pass-through, pass-through that garage. We're going to continue to kind of back in, into the garage. So what we did, from a staff standpoint, we said, okay, this is going to, this is really hard to make work. Let's go out and look out in the community to see if there's anything else that could fit our needs. And that's what staff did. Staff went out to kind of the surrounding area to take a look to see if, is there any properties that are available? So, we saw, like everybody else, saw that the McDonald's site had a for lease sign on it, and it was slated to be tore down, and a retail shopping center is going to be built on that McDonald's site at 2807 Newport Boulevard. We reached out and called the broker, and hence the broker reached out and spoke to the landlord, and we had a conversation with him, and he said, are you interested in selling the property? So again, this property's never been for sale. We reached out and cold-called them and said, are you interested in selling the property? Because we may want it, to purchase it for a fire station. This photo in front of you on the slide, it just kind of shows that we're relocating just .3 miles, or that potential site is .3 miles away. So now for this new site, so it's 17,000 square feet, over 17,000 square feet, compared to the existing site, which was 11,000, so it's about 52% bigger. We did some conceptual drawings with our pull-through, and because it has kind of access to three streets, you know, it's kind of a fantastic property in our eyes. Go to the next slide. So here's some, just some conceptual drawings. We actually had our architect take that building that we proposed for the existing site and plopped it down onto this McDonald's site, and there's a lot more possibilities of kind of a pull-through access, along with actual parking the personnel vehicles onto the same property. Again, this is just conceptual, this is not meant to be an approval of these renderings. So if we were to actually purchase the site and relocate our Fire Station 2, our biggest question was, what is that response time? Now, remember, this was a site that's only .3 miles away from our current site. So, this is really hard to read, but on the photo on the left shows the current Fire Station number 2, and those kind of orange lines that go out kind of reach out as far as with regards to our response times. And if you look at the photo on the right, we've moved our Fire Station 2, that's just that .3 miles, and we see very little change in our response times from either locations. Again, the new site that we're proposing is .3 miles away from the existing site. So one of the questions we had is what is going to be kind of the, not necessarily the impacts, but what does the surrounding areas look like? So, our existing Fire Station 2, you know, we have the new hotel under construction that's about 175 feet away. We know there is development occurring about 165 feet away for some multifamily, and towards the south there, about 200 feet away, we got some existing residential. So, you know, we're surrounded by residential and a hotel project. On the proposed site, you know, what do we have in our surrounding area? We have similar uses, we have a residential tract about a little greater than 100 feet away across Newport Boulevard. We have an existing motel across the street, and we have some mixed use about 170 feet away also. Now, we wanted to kind of put it into context, and so we kind of branched down, looked at all the existing fire stations that we have. So this is Fire Station number one. As far as what is, it's right next door to, you know, a residential tract of housing, and then you got some housing across the street too. So it's surrounded by residential. This is our, I want to save where, Fire Station 3 on Santa Barbara next to our police station. It's about 200 feet away from the new multifamily project that was just constructed behind it, and another about five, less than 500 feet away from some more multifamily. Here we are, Fire Station 4 on Babo Island, we're, you know, we're right up against residential. Fire Station 5, you could see how close we are to residential, it's about 65 feet away in the front and about another 20 feet. This is on Marygold and Coron del Mar. Fire Station 6, you could see we're very close to residential there. Fire Station 7, we're not so close, we're pretty far away, almost 600 feet away from surrounding residential. The rest of it is commercial. And Fire Station 8, again, we're right up next to our residential tracts. So, looking at kind of a site comparison, we just want to compare the existing sites to our new site, and you could see that the new site is about 50% larger, has access to three streets, Newport Boulevard and 28th Street, our response times are acceptable. We did an appraisal for market value, we kind of compared what our existing site's worth, about 2.3 million, versus the new site, which is worth 3.5 million based on the appraisal that we did receive. So we kind of plugged all our kind of estimate numbers in for a potential construction project. Now, I just want to remind the council, this is really just, just an estimates, kind of a ballpark idea. If we look at our cost for our existing site, you know, demo construction about 7.1 million, you could see there on kind of midway, the cost for a temporary station, about a half a million dollars, and for land, about a half a million, and this is just an estimate. If we were to replace the existing fire station in its current location, we've got to relocate Fire Station 2, and there's a cost to that. There's a land cost and a fire station cost. So this is just our, kind of our best estimate of what those costs would be. Now, if you compare that to the construct, the cost of purchasing and new construction, it's some, it's almost equivalent, but we did put in a deduction there for the sale of the existing site, if we were to sell it at its current appraised value of 2.3 million. So we did subtract that from the overall cost. The last item there says parking revenue about 18 months. That is for our McDonald's site. It's going to take us about 18 months to do entitlements, to do design, so in the meantime, we could actually use it as a public parking and generate some revenue off that too. So, so why would we recommend purchasing it? Well, it's improved site access, this is again for the new location. We're going to get some pull-through access for our trucks. Our personnel can actually park on-site, and it's safer for our staff to be on-site and drive through the garage versus backing into the garage. Property is larger, as we know, and our response times are acceptable. We could offset the cost of the purchase in the future if the council wishes to by the sale of that existing site, or possibly even turn it into public parking and generate revenue, about $100,000 per year if we convert it into kind of a public parking lot. That concludes my presentation. We're here to answer questions.
Thank you, staff. Any questions from the dais at this time, or do you want any public comments first? Councilman O'Neil?
Just a couple. Simone, on the funding requirement discussion, where it looks like we're looking at three different funds, one being the I-13 money that's about $805,000, which is entirely from developer fee agreements, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and then building excise tax fund, could you explain what that is?
That is a, it is a tax on building development, so when some, in developer pulls a permit for really almost anything, they pay a very small fee per square foot, and I don't remember the rate, but it's a tiny amount, and it's been the same rate for many decades, and that fund has been building over time. And the idea of that fund is to pay for police and fire stations.
Okay, and then we're looking at the facilities financing, financial planning fund, that's also a mix of general fund and developer fees, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent questions. Any other questions? Any, okay, out to the public, any public comments on this item? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Dennis Halloran. I first came to the Babo Peninsula in 1943. I retired to the 28th Street Marina 15 years ago, and I serve on the noise committee for the Homeowners Association. Since I last appeared before you on the Woody's debacle, as you all know, I've undergone life-saving lung surgery, and I'm still learning to speak effectively, so please bear with This council owes us one. The constant battle for quality of life on our peninsula, canceling the Woody's decision was a reversal to us. We won, you guys lost it for us, okay? McFire Station is a bad idea. Putting a fire station next to $50 million worth of residences and businesses is not enhancing our quality of life. The city has previously spoken out on noise from this exact site. It restricted some uses in deference to the neighboring residents. For instance, when the McDonald's was built there, they couldn't use an outside speaker, couldn't do a call box, you know, order box, and they had to provide a hedge to prevent lights from shining in the buildings. Well, the city has been aware of even the slightest noise violation for the local residents. The city has spoken on noise many times. Our good neighbor, Avila's El Rancito, is restricted by the city and then complied to keep life bearable for the 35 residents owned mostly by retirees. This would be an excellent place if Station 2 stayed where it is. It's mostly a commercial neighborhood now, some residential, but not most, and if the city would show a little imagination, it would serve as a great site for the next 60 years. An example, this would be an excellent place for repurposed ship containers. Look at the model of the building that is in the attached deal, and you can see if you've looked at any containerized ship uses for veterans' housings, for schools, for government buildings, this is an ideal subject for that. So that'd be a pretty good savings. This is spreading throughout schools and government now. Lift parking, there's one, there's just a shift change with the fire department, there's a parking problem. Lift parking is another contemporary concept that would work here. Parking spaces are needed. If the city proceeds with the purchase of this site, I pray that you will see the light and use it as a cash cow parking facility. We know from the website how you feel. May I quote, "I support the protection of the integrity of our residential neighborhood through land use and family-friendly and compatible mix of uses in adjacent commercial areas. Please, no McFire Station."
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and if there are a couple of you planning on speaking on this item, would you please come to the first row and stand at opposing podiums?
Hello, my name is Gary Di Perini. I'm a resident of the same homeowners association and building there at 28th Street Marina. I've been there since 1994. I love my place, it's my home, I've retired there. I love it because I can leave my windows open at night, catch those breezes, don't have to use the air conditioner. When I bought it, I knew I was taking the place subject to a few nuisances. We have bars around us, we have the 130 crowd pouring out of the bars and making some noise. We get about 50% of the existing fire alarm calls going past us currently. We also hear the police, it's rather loud, but I bought, I came to the nuisance. I'm there, I love it, I want to continue to live there. But now what's being proposed is to give me 100% of all of the lights and sirens right across the street. I mean, I'm dead right across the street from this. So are my neighbors. the street from this. So are my neighbors. There's 35 citizens there, voters. And we agreed with your previous rulings that the general plan is going to make that area more residential-friendly. This would not be residential-friendly. The existing location of the firehouse was and is currently amongst an area where businesses exist, and nobody's there at night to be disturbed. But a rich and influential developer has now put in a hotel. He proposes to put in a bunch of condominiums, and I'm sure he would find it nice that this fire station move away and enhance his values. But realize this. It would be very expensive for me to replace the eight windows and the two double side, two-door sliding doors and have three-pane windows, whereas this developer has yet to put in the windows at his hotel. Most hotels these days don't open their windows, the air conditioning heat without opening windows. But in his new condos, he could put in triple pane windows. So I think the location currently works. All I know is that when you're going to talk about a double drive-through, you remember those streets, Newport Boulevard, go in opposite direction. So a fire truck pulls in, and it's got to go the other way on Newport. That means he's got to go through our neighborhood down and find a nice hairpin turn for a very large truck and hook and ladder to turn and go back down the boulevard. So we get to have that twice. Thank you in the past for protecting us from the various entities that wanted to disturb our neighborhood with further things. I appreciate the fact that you've done that. I accept and love the place I live as it is. I just don't want to make it worse. And, like I said, the new developer, he can take precautions. He's going to find plenty of buyers for these things. They will move to the nuisance, and they will accept it. And there's some land there in the parking lot that can be used. There's also those two streets next to it that can be narrowed, made one-way, additional spot, additional land for the place to be built. I thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is George Schroeder, and I've been a 29-year resident on the peninsula. I'm sympathetic to the last two speakers. And I do want to say, the 29 years I've lived here, there have been times when I've started to come up here about things that were going to have a personal impact on my life. And then I've asked myself to try and look at the big picture, and I haven't always spoken. And then anytime there's change, people always imagine their worst fears and not how things might actually work out. And I just want to say that I think when you think about this, and when you decide this, when we look at a fire station, I think probably most of the calls are, a person had a stroke or heart attack. They're not fire calls. I'm sure we all know this. And if we hear from the fire chief, that's what he is going to say. So I think when you decide this, you have to decide what's in the best interest of all of the residents in Newport Beach, and particularly the people who will be served by this fire station. If there was not a Lidl hotel that was going to be built, if the old city hall site was used for the new city hall, the current fire station is obsolete. It's too small. It cannot accommodate the new fire trucks. Okay? So you probably have to relocate the fire station. Okay? They did look at alternative locations. They looked at a site, I think, on Coast Highway by Hoag. You know, they've been looking at this for the last 10 years. I live not too far from the fire station on 32nd Street. I'm not impacted by it, but they do drive by my house. Okay? So I hear the sirens all the time. I'll hear them, if it's at 28th Street also, because they'll drive by my house wherever they're going. But, you know, I just think that we don't make a public safety decision on people's personal preference. You have to look at the greater good. So, you know, I'm sure I like, you know, I don't know, you know, so... And then, you know, we did discuss this at our West Newport Beach Board meeting a few times. We didn't take an official vote, but all of the residents seem to believe that this was a good idea because it's a larger site. It's a good location in that it's easier to get in and out than having to drive through the intersection at 32nd Street and Newport Boulevard. So those are my thoughts on it. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. From the graphic we saw about the response times, it did appear that a site closer to Hoag would be more centrally located in the area this station is trying to serve. But I wanted to speak about the economics of this. As you know, I try to pay attention to what you do at your closed sessions, and I know that you spoke on July 25th with Director Georges about the asking price for this property, which we now hear is $4 million. And I'm sure, although it all sounded very glib in the presentation, I'm not the only person in the community that is wondering about what we find in the staff report. Because if we look at page 60, it tells us the current owner of the property on June 14th of last year purchased this very property for $1,975,000. It's the estimate of the appraiser. And the appraiser's report on its very first page puts the value of this currently at $2,665,000. Yet you're being asked to approve paying $4 million. So I'm wondering how a property that was sold a year ago for $2 million is suddenly this year worth $4 million. I think the public deserves some clarification of that. You perhaps heard the explanation in the closed session on July 25th. The public has not heard that. Also, I noticed on February 14th of this year, you had a closed session in which you were discussing four potential sites. This was one. The closed session didn't say that you were looking for a fire station, but you were talking about the price of four properties. One was this one. The other three were on 32nd Street, including the church building that has been subject to so much contention. And I think the public might deserve, at this point, to know why those other sites were rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments on this item? I think that is a fair point that you brought up about appraisal values, and there are some restrictions, I believe, that don't apply to us. Could you please explain to him?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Muldoon. The appraisal value, the appraiser appraised the property at $3.5 million, but there is a deed restriction to prevent future food services, so the appraiser discounted that value to $2.6 million. We don't propose to put a food service on the property. We're looking at, to relocate our fire station. We looked at this as a value at $3.5 million, which is supported by the appraisal. Again, the appraiser discounted the value because of the deed restriction, no food service by 25%. The property was not for sale. It's not been for sale. We did a cold call and talked to the property owner and said, are you interested in selling the property? And so staff negotiated this price because it wasn't for sale at all. And so we are, from a staff standpoint, we have a lot of interest in this property.
Thank you. So I'm sure there are some comments or questions from the diocese. I'd like to request, could you return that slide that gives the financial breakdown? So you see, there's an earlier mention of response times, and we discussed this before I go into the numbers. Response time essentially the same. Impact to local traffic essentially the same, correct?
That is correct.
Here, we see a cost is fairly similar to building on the same site or building on this site. And in my opinion, staff did a great job of negotiating this deal, given the buyer, who knew who we were and what our intentions were, and that we were different from other buyers who were restricted by a deed restriction. The problem I have with this decision is I have these residents coming to me who are concerned about a nuisance. And I personally, you could all feel differently, can't tell them they have to accept Woody's because Woody's was there first, and they moved to the nuisance, and then move what arguably could be a nuisance to their neighborhood when it's adequate location as is. I don't have, for lack of a better word, this fire in me to see this go either way, but I respectfully have to defer to the residents who live there. Councilman Piotr.
I think that'd be a great follow-up if we could have the fire department tell us how they operate their other stations in residential neighborhoods in order to not be a nuisance, since I think every station but maybe seven is in a residential neighborhood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Fire Chief Chip Duncan. I'd be happy to explain this. I think I can alleviate some of the concerns of the residents. Obviously, I received some emails, and they asked some very good questions, and I think that we can answer some of those questions for them tonight. And we're going to queue up the PowerPoint here. So I guess the operative word for us is neighbor. Mr. Georges did a great job of showing some of our, all of our stations in Newport Beach are basically surrounded by residences. But some of our stations typically, which we'll get here, are very much what we call in the fire service, neighborhood fire stations, located in the neighborhood. We want them there because that's what we're there to do, is protect the people in the neighborhood. This station right here is Fire Station One. We took a little different perspective. Station One, we kind of did a ground level. You guys are all familiar with this. It's 110 East Balboa, adjacent to the library. That's the front side. You can see we've got residential right there next to it. And then one of the things I had my personnel do is take a picture from the apparatus bay door as the apparatus bay door opens up, because that potentially could be the problem with the sirens. I know that's probably the major concern, is the siren noise, correct? So we know that we can be very loud and obnoxious with our sirens. So we have a long history with our fire department here that we're very sensitive to when we use the sirens. We are required by the vehicle code, and certain times we have to use our audible sirens. But there's a lot of times, especially at nighttime or in the early hours in the morning, that we don't use our audible sirens because they're not needed. But just for discussion purposes, you need to understand that the vehicle code is very clear, that when we request the right-of-way, asking vehicles to pull to right, we have to sound our audible siren. Also, probably the most dangerous thing is when we have to go around vehicles and oppose traffic, we naturally have to use our audible sirens to get folks to comply with this when we come on the other side of the road. We don't like doing that. We try to avoid it, but occasionally we do. So with all being said, we are sensitive to the sirens being very loud, and they can be, you know, obtrusive. But again, we're sensitive to that. So Station Four, another neighborhood fire station on Balboa Island, pretty familiar fire station. Take a look. Village Inn's right across the street. Most everybody's familiar with the Village Inn. And then you can see we have residential right across from that. Another view right there, more residential. We also have residential right adjacent to Station Four. If you go back in time from Station Four, and we moved Station Four from its original location farther up Marine Avenue, the neighbors that were located next to where the Station Four was going to, it was an old gas station piece of property. There were some big concerns about how much we would impact them. And I think the former fire chief did the same thing I'm doing right now, had, got up and spoke about how he was very sensitive to the needs of the neighbors, and we'd be respectful of the neighbors, and that's going to continue. Fire Station Number Five on Marygold. It's been there since 1949. The residents directly across the street, clearly, if we were impacting them, they would be very upset. And kind of a side note here, the person who owns this piece of property is a retired LA County Battalion Chief, and I have, I firmly believe if there was an issue with us being loud and obnoxious, he would definitely come over and let us know about it. So that's high on our radar screen. Then Station Eight, one of our newer fire stations built up in Newport Coast. Same thing, you turn to the left, and we've got condos right there. So with that being said, just to summarize that, our fire stations are in the neighborhoods, and we have people surrounding our fire stations, and we are sensitive to that. So if you go back to, go one more. Keep going. So one of the things that I think I can explain that might alleviate some of your concerns is we looked at how we would respond out of that fire station. What's the best way to respond? If you watch our current fire station on 32nd Street, the way they currently respond, they go down 32nd Street, and our preferred street is Balboa, because it's two ways, it's a bigger street. We don't like going down Newport Boulevard because it's one-way either direction. It's narrow. It's just not a good way to respond. Most of responses go down and out on Balboa. So I would say we would probably use that same response pattern. I talked to Public Works. We could also, we would be using some traffic control measures, some lights, in order for us to get down 28th Street onto Balboa, and that would further diminish our need to use the audible siren to get down there onto Balboa. Obviously, there would be a turn onto Newport Boulevard if we were going north. But there's also a light there, so we can control that light and make it a green light. So we would not be required to use our audible siren most of the time. Occasionally, I'm going to be honest with you, every now and then, depending on what the traffic is like there at that time, we might have to use the audible siren. But again, we'd be sensitive. That would only be last case or worst-case scenario. Go ahead, next one. So somebody brought up, we decided to run an analysis of all where our calls are at and which direction of travel we typically go. So I had our GIS folks go ahead and populate a map of all the calls we respond to, fires, medical aid, service calls. We run a myriad of calls out of that fire station. It is our busiest fire station. Our busiest unit there averages nine calls a day. But the majority of our calls actually are north of 28th Street. So if we went down 28th Street and turned up Balboa, we'd be going to the right. We'd be going away from 28th Street. So approximately about over 80% of our calls, you take and mix and match all the different call varieties we have, are on the other side, our north side of 28th Street, going the other way. So Mr. Georges showed you this as the option one, where we come out on the 28th Street. Just one of the options. That's the one I pulled is for berevity, because that would be directly responding on the 28th Street. So obviously, again, the operative word here is being good neighbors. We have a long history of having fire stations in the neighborhood. We know that we do not want to negatively impact the residents that surround us. And honestly, before I became the fire chief, I was operations chief, so I was the complaint department. So anybody would complain about sirens, I would get that complaint first. And we do get some complaints, but honestly, I probably get less than five complaints a year as far as siren noise and sire usage. That means our folks out in the field are being good, responsible members of the community by not using their, overusing their sirens too much, only when needed. One of the things I got, when I got the emails from some of the folks in that 28th Street, they had some recommendations. One of them was to not use the siren within four blocks of that area. Obviously, that's not feasible with the vehicle code. Obviously, we can diminish that usage. One of the other things that was brought up was that the fire captain would be responsible for that siren usage, and that's currently the way it is. The fire captain is responsible for that vehicle, and he is responsible for how that vehicle responds. So use Balboa when possible. That's typically the way we respond right now. Again, committed to minimizing the impact on the residents all around us, not just the folks on 28th Street, but all the folks in that area down there, because we're going to impact just more than the folks on 28th Street. And then continue to provide the highest level of service to the public on the peninsula. Mr. Schroeder articulated this very well, and thank you very much, but we've outgrown that fire station on 32nd Street. We just cannot get the equipment in and out of there. It's not safe the way we operate currently with the way we have to back in the fire station. I served that fire station for a long time, and backing that fire station is just not the best way to do business. Pull-through fire station is a better way to do business down there. So with that being said, that's the fire department perspective on the potential move of fire station to, oh, to the new site. And I stand ready for any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Yeah, it's quite obvious. You know, we were in a tough position. But when this site, at least for me, when it became available, and listen to the chief, it is just really a perfect site, and it solves a number of very critical issues for the fire department. I like the idea that it's very visible to the community. It's out there. The other fire station is pretty tucked away. This is a very high-impact area in town, of course, lots and lots of residents, lots of tourists. And so I think it's going to be a benefit in some other ways, as far as people getting emergency services and things quickly and being able to identify the station. I think, for me, we have to look at benefiting all residents. What's the right decision? The thing that strikes me is, you know, the fire station might last 50 years, but I think this city will have this site for longer than that. And this is the opportunity, this just happens to be there, and the three streets right there. It just sort of was clear. And it's very difficult when you are impacting people. But I have, you know, and I was really worried about that. But when I saw, before this, but when I saw the stations around the city and how close they are to residences, I think us on the diocese here would be hearing it big time if the fire department wasn't doing the job to keep the noise down and respect the neighbors. And certainly, it's interesting how stations become part of the community and the officers become part of the community. And I think- become part of the community, and I think everyone enjoys their fire station, I know on Balboa Island, they certainly do, but these are more than just fire stations, they are really places of public goodwill from the standpoint of just interacting with the folks at the fire station. So I think this is going to be really good for the Balboa community and for our visitors to have this station right out front and open, and really good for the fire department to be able to operate in a safer manner, have more room to move, basically, and it's just an exceptional location. So I'm, I am for this, and I have every confidence that the fire department can work with the residents at 28th Street, but all the residents nearby, to be as mindful of the residents as possible, so. But it's one of those situations, to Jim's point and to all of us, because we all thought about this, I think, in the conversations about the delta of the extra for this site, but I think when we look at it over time, with all the benefit, it's well worth it. That's my view of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me make a few comments, since I represent the district, and I want to thank you to the residents who have taken the time to write and come in this evening, and I've told them individually, and I'll say it again publicly, that this is the beginning of a process, if the council approves this purchase this evening, it will take probably two or two and a half years before any firehouse is actually operating, and during that period of time, there will be multiple public forums to, for me personally, to meet with the residents and engage them all, every step along the way, to make sure that their voices and desires are heard, to be a collaborative, public, open process. There'll be public hearings before this body, before the Planning Commission, there'll be CEQA, Community Environmental Quality Act requirements on public hearings that will specifically measure noise and nuisance factors. Let me thank Chief Duncan and Mr. Juerges and your staff for how you've put this together and proactively, and Public Works looking for a site to improve service. Public safety is our number-one duty in, to provide service for the residents of this community, and my colleagues have said this very well. But let me just talk about as representative from the district and that area, and some of the existing, as you've identified, existing nuisances that occur outside your front window or rear door, wherever you are. And going back a few years ago, I certainly sympathized and voted in accordance with your desires to make sure that we reduce and mitigate the nuisances that occur technically or most prominently between 11:00 and 2:00 a.m. or 3:00 a.m. pretty much every weekend. I've done many ride-alongs, so I'm familiar with what does go on out there, and I, this is my personal opinion, has not been scientifically quantified, but I do believe that a fire station in that specific location will go to a great length to improve the existing nuisance factors of your quality of life on that street. I see the, I call it the mass migration, you've heard me speak about it, of revelers at 2:00 to 3:00 a.m. as the bars close, and there are walking many hundreds by foot down Newport and Balboa Boulevards, right by Mr. Schroeder's home. This goes on all year long, Friday, Saturday, sometimes late into Sunday evening. Right there between 28th and 29th and 30th Street, that's where they congregate, there are pizza places right there, and they sit on the street and eat pizza and do what else they do in the bushes and things like that. I truly feel that a fire station with 24-hour, seven-day-a-week personnel right there at kind of point zero for post-bar closing activity will be a positive improvement to the area. I truly believe that, and as we've seen with the hotel and with other development going on in the peninsula, down to Marina Park and beyond, down to Balboa Village, we are seeing improvement in the peninsula, and I really do believe ultimately property values are steadily rising. Coastal California is a desirable place to invest, and I think we're all seeing that. So I am appreciative that staff spends and the fire department cares about our community and our nearby residents, and you work, I know, three years ago, I would get calls from residents right there at 32nd Street off Balboa. I don't hear from them anymore, I presume you'd be hearing from them if there were complaints. I do hear fire sirens going all day long on the weekends, I mean, there's just a lot of activity, as you see on that chart. So I want to be responsive to our residents, and I promise, you have my personal commitment, if this goes through this evening, to acquire this property and to spend the next 18 months to design and build a facility that will support the community's needs and meet your needs as residents, it will be collaborative. You have me as your representative to ensure that, I want to protect that, I want that to be a safe and clean and nuisance-free area, and I think adding a fire station there will make tremendous progress in that area. It's ironic that we've just sat here the past year on the Corona del Mar Fire Station, and residents are demanding and pounding on the doors to build that fire station, rebuild that fire station, right in the middle of a residential area. So I know it's different, and it's perceived differently by wherever you live. We have a beautiful community that, with public safety agencies that are willing, always willing to work with us to protect our community first and to work with us as residents, secondly. So if this goes through, and I hope it does, because I think it will be a tremendous benefit to our community, I will work with you, and you could call me 24/7, and if things aren't working well, the first person I was going to call is the police chief and say, or the fire chief, and say, "Is there a siren going off, what's the problem?" So you have me as your representative, I am here for you, I want to protect your property, I want to protect both sides of your property, on the water side, on the street side, and on your adjacencies, I'm here to do that with you and for you, and I hope we can work together to accomplish that. So thank you, staff, for your work so far, and I hope we can see this through. Thank you very much.
Councilman Herman.
Just real quickly, I had an opportunity to speak with our city manager about a number of topics today, but this was one of them, and I was very impressed with his explanation of the, and Chip, our fire chief, did an excellent job too tonight of explaining this good neighbor policy in terms of noise and sirens. I live less than a block away from the Balboa Island Fire Station, and I just have to tell you honestly, the sirens are basically a non-issue, they just simply do not bother us. They leave the fire station, and if you know what Marina Avenue looks like, it's difficult to get down, and they'll do an intermittent siren, it's not a continuous siren, just to warn people to get out of the way, and I can see that practice being implemented over on Newport Boulevard in Balboa. I just have to say to you, I think you're worrying a little too much about a problem that probably won't even exist, respectfully, all right? Thank you.
Mayor Procham Duffield.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've listened to the former fire chief poster, and now our new fire chief, both of which really want this site, that says something, and I also, I know that we, no one's brought up technology, but as we go further along here, the technology that will, would provide a much better, much safer egress and regress of these big trucks going, coming and going, to the extent that we don't even know. I mean, our phones now can be linked, will probably be linked in some way, and as earthquakes, prepared warning, warnings and tsunami warnings, all this technology, I think, can be applied, the sound technology for the building inside of it, when you're running your engines and doing your things, should be applied, and I know that you want to do that. I mean, that's what, we're going to give you those tools to do that, and maybe we don't have a lot of it today, tonight, but I'll go one step farther, and I'm going to tell you, from my standpoint, I see your trucks run by lithium batteries very soon. And that's not, that's a fact, we have huge ships that are, ferries that are 400 feet long running on lithium batteries. So anyway, I just didn't want to leave any of that out, I want to know, want everyone to know that the technology factor is going to enhance all of the various fire stations that we have, not just this one, as I'm sure you would embrace. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak on the dais? I see none, is there a motion?
I move to support the purchase of the real property located at 2807 Newport Boulevard.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Dixon, and a second by Councilwoman Herdman. Seeing no request to discuss further, let's vote.
With Mayor Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Madam Clark, before we do motion reconsider, is there an ordinance title you have to read?
Yes, for item 23, I inadvertently did not read the ordinance title, for ordinance number 2017-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to certain front yard and side yard setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion reconsider?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. Any motions to reconsider?
Seeing none, we are adjourned.